Okay, and we're starting the webinar, Mr. Feinberg, if you want to give people a few minutes to come into the room.
Will do, thank you. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the January 21st, 2021 Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. We could say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to their public
for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Sorry.
Ms. Larson?
Ms. Larson had a bit of a emergency at home, so we're she may join us later.
Okay. Ms. Menji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
The Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here, thank you, Mr. Regal. I'll accept the motion to approve the official minutes from the January 7th, 2021 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Sinta moves.
Snodgrass, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to adjust the agenda a little bit this evening in two ways. Dr. Ruscia would like to make some opening comments. And also we do have, I believe, 20 people who have submitted public comments and rather than having all of our musicians sit through an hour of public comment, we'll move up the recognition of the PMEA students prior to public comment. Dr. Ruscia?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I would like to take a moment this evening to address some of the concerns that have been raised at our last few school board meetings regarding our school district's equity initiatives and the work that many of us know as Basis. But before I do, I want to explain our protocol for any audience members who may not be familiar with school board protocols. Our school board and administration does not typically provide an on-the-spot verbal response to public comments. And this is true of the vast majority of school boards throughout Pennsylvania. A school board meeting is a formal meeting held to conduct formal, official business in public. And as such, most school boards choose not to use this time for a back-and-forth exchange with residents and parents. Because of this, there may be times when it does appear that we aren't really listening to the comments. I can assure you that quite the opposite is true. We listen to, we absorb, and we reflect upon every single public comment. And where appropriate, the administration follows up on them after the meeting. When an issue rises to the surface of needing more widespread information, we schedule public meetings and plan presentations as we did so many times throughout the summer while managing the impact of the pandemic upon our schools. After several weeks of receiving similar public comments, and in some cases, the same exact comment at our school board meetings, each calling for an end to our district's equity initiatives, I feel compelled to clarify the intent and goals of our initiatives. I believe the comments we've received are based on misconception about what equity means in the School District of Haverford Township. Over the last few weeks, we've received several public comments from residents who believe that our equity initiative, known as Basis, belonging and socio-cultural identities in schools are politically motivated and designed to make each student equal or each student the same. We believe strongly, as a board and administration, that every student is equal in that each student and staff member has the same rights, deserves the same care, the same respect, and is an equally valuable member of our school community. However, we certainly don't want our students to be the same. This is simply not the meaning or the message of equity. In fact, we celebrate and we embrace our students' individuality. Equity is the freedom from bias. It means creating a condition of fairness. The goal of our Basis work is to create a school district that is supportive, inclusive, and safe for all students, regardless of their race, their gender, sexual identity, socioeconomic class, religious beliefs, educational level, class status, and any number of identities or identifying characteristics for which our society might judge someone. That is equity. We want all of our students to feel supported, included, and welcomed here. And we want them all to have the same access to a high-quality education. That is equity. In order to achieve this goal, the Basis work provides opportunities for our students and staff to build meaningful relationships, to learn about various cultures, and widen our worldview. Basis is not a curriculum. It's not a set of lessons. But rather, it is a district focus on ensuring that all students see themselves reflected in our curricula, in the materials that encourage critical thinking while considering multiple perspectives. Today, many things in our society have become politicized. But I can assure you that our school district's equity initiatives are not part of any political agenda. There is nothing political, there should be nothing political, about committing to ensure that every single child who walks through our doors feels safe, welcome, valued, and nurtured. Black, white, gay, straight, transgender, binary, and every intersection of these identities. Poor, wealthy, liberal, conservative. Every single student here is expected to treat their classmates and our staff members with kindness and respect. And they should expect to receive that as well. There is nothing political about that. That is the work of our school district. And it will continue. We are very proud of this work, and we thank our community for supporting these efforts. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Dr. Ruscia. I'd just like to follow up briefly and say that, you know, I've I've run for school board six times now. And oftentimes, my friends will say to me that I must be out of my mind. Why? Why do I keep coming back? And the simple fact is that I believe in the value of American public education. I believe that our role here, the mission of the district, is to create informed American citizens. And I see this, the Basis program, as an integral part of that mission. And I would also just like to mention that I know that all of my colleagues on the board share that sentiment. So, thank you, Dr. Ruscia.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, the next item on our agenda. Like to recognize Mr. Donahue and Mr. Hart for recognition of our PMEA district-level students.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I'll be quick. I know we have a full agenda tonight, but we have some excellent students with us tonight who've achieved the status that is pretty remarkable. And I just want to thank the board for taking time out to recognize them and Mr. Hart, Ms. Handler, Mr. Brennan for the fine job they do at the high school. And all the music teachers of the district. They do such a tremendous job when the students get to Haverford, they're ready to take it to the next level. And with us tonight, we have 18 wonderful students who take it to the next level each day and really have impressed us this year, and they've been practicing with their masks on in class. You know, they cut holes in their masks. They've been very careful. And they made it to the next level, which is even remarkable. So, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Hart and our PMEA District 12 Award winners.
Thank you so much. Dr. Ruscia, Ms. Saxa, Mr. Donaghy, Mr. Feinberg, members of the school board and Haverford community, good evening to you all. Over the years, PMEA District 12 festivals have been a wonderful experience for our students. They meet like-minded people from neighboring schools. They rehearse and perform quality repertoire, and they learn from wonderful guest conductors. This year's festivals were another unfortunate casualty of the coronavirus pandemic. And yet, despite this fact, and with full awareness of it, our students chose to still take part in the audition process. They chose to practice hard, and they were selected through their efforts through competitive audition to earn PMEA district-level recognition. They bring honor to themselves, to their families, to us as their teachers, and to the school community. The District 12 band students representing Haverford High School are as follows, and I would ask that you gentlemen make sure that your cameras are on, and then you please say hi as I introduce you. They are Henry Allen and Nathaniel Drew.
Thank you.
And Cole Yakono.
Thank you.
And please join me in congratulating these students. I would now like to turn things over to Ms. Handler, who is our choir director at the high school. So, thank you very much for having us here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And once again, just thank you so much for allowing the students to come onto the meeting tonight and for recognizing their efforts. Thank you also for your support of the music program throughout this time. It just really means a lot to all of our students to be able to keep their passions going. So, thank you so much. For district choir, we had Tom Huangpu, who is not able to be here tonight, but we can still clap for Tom. Owen Cruisen. Alexandria Lauf, who's also not here tonight. Shane Linehauser. Shane is here. Shane, can you say hello? Oh, no sound. He's trying. Okay. Well, Shane said hello. Hello. Jose Polacarpio. There he is. Sofia Politano.
Thank you.
Libby Switzer could not be here tonight. Sarah Wax also unable to be here. And then Elizabeth Womack, who is with us.
Thank you.
And now I will turn it over to Mr. Brennan to introduce the orchestra students.
Thank you, Ms. Handler. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Brennan. I'm the orchestra director at Haverford High School. Before I proceed, as has been mentioned before, I'd like to, on behalf of all the music students, their families, and our music staff throughout the district, to thank the board, the administration for their time this evening, their continued efforts and support as they've always have done for us. Thank you so much. It's now my pleasure to recognize those students who were accepted into the 2021 PMEA District 12 Orchestra. On violin, Chloe Hewn. Saw Chloe. 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 She was here a moment ago. There we go. On viola, Kevin Zhang, who is always on and always with his camera on. Thank you, Kevin.
Aye, thank you.
Jordan Barbie, also on viola, and she is not here this evening. On cello, both of our cellists are here, though. Katie Yun.
Hello.
And before mentioned, Jose Polacarpio.
Thank you.
And then finally, and unfortunately Amelia was not here, but on double bass, Amelia Lind. Thank you very, very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Again, thank you, board, for taking time out. This is one of the highest numbers of students combined getting the PMEA, and during a coronavirus pandemic is even more special. So, we thank you for taking time out to recognize these wonderful, wonderful students.
Well, congratulations all, and keep up the great work. And thank you, staff, very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. If you'd like to stay and listen to an hour of public comment, you're more than welcome to, but we understand if you have something else to do. Anna, you're ready to read?
I'm always ready, Mr. Feinberg.
All right.
Okay. We had a few comments this evening, so I'll just start from the top. Our first one's from Louis Capice from 222 Steel Road. Dear Haverford Township School Board and Dr. Ruscia, unconventionality is the theme for the school year 2020-2021. It is the year our children attend school differently. It is the year parents are more engaged with their children's education. Our eyes are open to the instructional practices utilized and the curriculum used. Equity and anti-racist program, which is Marxism, have infiltrated our K-12 public school district. Cancel culture needs to stop as it limits free speech. Tax dollars may not stifle free speech or infringe on rights. You are creating bias and thus creating divisiveness and doing so with our tax dollars. Regards. Our next one's from Ellen Bailey at 2930 Normandy Road. I am saddened by the lack of support for Basis program expressed by community members at the board meeting today. The flawed thinking behind these comments is precisely the reason why we need to include this type of education in our schools. It is the hope that our children can one day create a more inclusive community. Rebecca Phelan at 2535 Rosemont Avenue. To the members of the Haverford Township School Board and community, thank you for your support of the Basis program. I am writing to express my concern that racist views are being allowed to set a hostile tone for meetings and for the Parent Guardian Equity Team's important work. When equal weight is given to racist letters and speakers, that is opposing anti-racist education, as if they are valid points of view, it makes our commitment to justice and inclusion seem negotiable. Our community has a long way to go in addressing the needs and rights of all, but I know that the school board, each school, and this generation of students is up to the task. We can't let a few unwilling or backward-thinking parents drag down the effort. Thank you for your time. Margaret Clark at 205 Mill Road. This is a letter in support of Basis and the Parent Guardian Equity Team. I am prouder and prouder to be a resident of Howardtown when I see the school district install programs such as Basis. The school environment should feel safe for any student. Encouraging students to have compassion and teaching them about differences amongst themselves creates a safe environment for every student. I am a parent of a child who has suffered in the school district due to her differences. As a grown-up, she feels still uncomfortable walking in Howardtown because she might bump into people she knew in school. The Basis program teaches compassion, and that can change how a student feels about their education. Angela Halpin-Poynton at 2525 Alcott Avenue. Dr. Ruscia and school board members, after watching last week's school board meeting as well as prior meetings, I'm concerned by the letters others have submitted questioning the investment in the Basis program. As a mom of two white males in the district who likely have all the privilege that our local community and nation have to offer, I am outraged on behalf of all the disadvantaged people within our district. Like me, the majority of our community favors the investment in this program, and thanks the district for utilizing it. In my opinion, all these letters against it are just further proof of how much programs like Basis are needed. As a community, we have a lot of work to do to foster a feeling of welcomeness and ensure all of our students are educated in a community based on fairness. Please continue to persevere towards this goal. This is from Linda Chaga at 206 East Park Road. Dear Dr. Ruscia and school board members, I have just learned of the equity or basis program in the school district is discussing for implementation. I am quite concerned with this and the direction we are heading in educating our students. First, I must tell you, the reason I moved to Howardtown 33 years ago was for the outstanding school district and the Blue Ribbon Elementary School of Chatham Park. I can tell you, it was more than worth it. My child received an education equivalent, or I think better, than provided by our top independent schools. One of the reasons for this was, of course, the curriculum, but that the parents were part of the programs, and there was a kind and loving understanding of differences and boundaries between parental obligations and school curriculum. My child and classmates were taught kindness, diversity, and respect through a careers program with Ms. Malam. It was outstanding and allowed their peers to participate and to be there for one another. As we progressed through middle school and high school, I was personally informed by numerous faculty, staff, and administration that this class of students, now including all the elementary schools, was the kindest group they had ever seen. We must have been doing something right. I am extremely proud of this, but I must tell you, this is the same class that has produced some of the most amazing doctors, lawyers, media producers, teachers, nurses, hairstylists, business owners, parents, and on and on. I do not approve of the program. You want to spend taxpayer monies and decrease the much-needed time our students need on curriculum. Yes, we want well-rounded citizens, and we have proved that we can do a fine job of producing them. I know Mr. Feinberg attended one of the finest public high schools in Philadelphia where I grew up. So, he is a fine example of public education. He has had his children graduate from Haverford, and they are too, were very fine students. I think we need to table this program and not use our students to test this experiment. I am sure there are many who agree that this year has been extremely difficult for us, and now is not the time to make a necessary change, but to strengthen what we have done so well. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concern. I hope you can tell I'm passionate about our schools and our community and always wanting the absolute best. Very sincerely yours. Tiffany and Michael Gotti from 129 East Turnbull Avenue. Dear Haverford Township School Board and Dr. Ruscia, we as parents, guardians, and taxpayers are kindly requesting that parents and guardians be notified via permission waiver to opt out our children when controversial materials or lessons will be presented in the classroom. We ask for a board policy to be drafted by February of 2021. We are asking for all lesson plans to be posted for parents to view. This includes daily lessons, plans in grades K through 12. Anti-racist and equity programming is part of a political agenda, controversial nature, and divisive. Equity means that we all end up at the same place. So, every child in Haverford Township Schools will end up in the same place. We will not have students entering the workforce, military service, college, or trade school. Do you expect all students to end up at the same point upon graduation and then go on to have the same future? The equity agenda you are implementing promotes everyone to be the same, end up at the same, and devoid of individuality. Our children have no business being part of a social experiment that in 10 years will have failed. Just as many past bandwagon-jargon-laden base programs failed. All programming and public education should identify measurable goals that utilize data, reading, writing, and math, and all have measurable outcomes. How many times was the Common Core restructured and reevaluated? Many. Education is big business, and this anti-racism and equity training is as well. Our taxpayer wallets will not be forever open for tax increases to fund these types of programs. Further, you're catering to a small group of parents and guardians and completely disregarding the rest of us who have a wide spectrum of beliefs and values. Education is a gift our forefathers fought for every person living in the USA to have. We want 90% of our students to be on grade level reading by graduation. Moreover, this is measurable and attainable with good research-based reading programs. We expect our students to be 90% proficient in algebra one by graduation using mathematics with empirical data with replication. We expect our children to be fluent writers who can compose short responses during using rich vocabulary. We desire students proficient in reading, excuse me, in writing spelling and focus, even if students utilize technology to assist with their skills. All math, reading, and writing proficiency are attainable, measurable, and part of real life. We need to stop utilizing our tax dollars for political agendas. In an article in the Washington Post written by Valerie Strauss in 2014, said it is time for those who fight for equity to question the very assumptions of reform. The goal of public education is to enhance the life of every student. We ask that the parents and guardians of this district's 6,444 students should be given that right. Students be given rights. Regards. This is from Ally Armstrong at 1113 Larchmont Avenue. Hello, it has been brought to my attention that someone has filed a right-to-know request to find out the identities and addresses of the volunteers on the Parent Guardian Equity Team. I must encourage our district to stand up against this type of intimidation. Please make a clear statement about valuing the input of parent volunteers. Many who are from marginalized communities may fear that they could be targets of the same violence and hatred we see in national news if their identities are shared. Thank you. Lisa Allen at 1721 Ridgeway Road. Dear School District of Haverford Township Board members and school leaders, I am writing to share my unwavering support for the district's Basis curriculum. It is unconscionable to me that any community members could speak out against it, particularly after witnessing the white supremacist-led riot and insurrection our nation's capital resulted in death and destruction. I am appreciative of the unanimous support of the board at the last meeting. More must be done to speak to those who will continue to disenfranchise any groups within our community. The right-to-know requests for names and addresses of the volunteers on the Parent Guardian Equity Team can only be read as a means of intimidation to silence those who would speak out and in favor of the equity in our district. This is disturbing and must be answered with an unwavering statement of support, stating that no amount of intimidation will silence the district in its goal of making meaningful change that is inclusive of all people. Board policy states that the board president can interrupt public comments when information that is not factual is being shared in public comments. It is essential that the school district make a clear and strong statement to refute misinformation such as comments that were made at the last school board meeting. Sincerely. This is from Lawrence Serlin at 1721 Ridgeway Road. To the Haverford Township School Board, I am writing in support of the Basis program that has been proposed to provide more balanced learning in our district. I understand that some of the community have recently spoken out in opposition to the program. I believe they are misguided and misinformed or have a warped view of racial bias in this country and the need to adjust our school curriculum to better reflect the diversity of our society. I also understand that the same group of outspoken critics of Basis have attempted to intimidate those who volunteered to work on the program's recommendations by seeking their names and addresses. The district should protect the identity of those individuals as appropriate, under the exceptions to the Pennsylvania Right-to-No law. Indeed, the work of the committee is presumably protected as part of deliberations of a governmental group. In any case, attempts at intimidation should be met with determined opposition. Sincerely. This is from the Brower family at 1565 Vermont Road. It is my perception that the individuals who oppose Basis program in the district have a fear that their students will be exposed to values that are not in line with their family values. In an effort to understand the opposition, I went to the Haverford District website to look for information. I urge opposers to seek out the Basis information sheet, clearly available on the website, and not participate in assumptions and gossip. A sense of belonging and individual value is important for everyone, regardless of race, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, and political affiliation. This is why people naturally seek out other people like them, resulting in the political split we find our country. We find our country and I fear our own community facing. But what if our community embraced and supported the differences instead? By understanding of the Basis programs, that it will create an environment in which all students do feel a sense of value and importance, that they might be able to discuss their differences without fear, and that their needs as individuals are met. So, we have less students seeking violence, drug use, hate crimes, or suicide as a way to deal with their lack of self-confidence and value. As I understand it, the curriculum will include factual and unbiased information from various points of view that will serve and represent all the students in our district in an effort to create critical thinkers and empathetic humans. While I know that the while I know that the way the curriculum will change is a bit muddy and hard to explain, I suggested the district perhaps provide a bulletin information sheet that provides an understanding of the efforts by grade level so that the parents may more clearly understand what the program is about. While I say the information is about Basis is clearly provided on the website, it's not easy to find, and there is only one document updated in 2019 that answered some of the questions. The Parent Guardian Equity Committee is a new program, and there is concern that these unelected individuals will be deciding changes to the curriculum. But my understanding is that any change made will be inspired by what is learned from them. While this program is in its early stages, I suggest attempting to be more transparent about goals and intentions. The confusion is creating misinformation and fear. My household supports these efforts, and I appreciate the work being done by the committee. Jen Leith at 282928 Morris Road. Dear Haverford Township School Board Directors and District Community, to say it has been difficult and challenging school year is an understatement. I write this evening to thank you all as a school board of directors and to thank Dr. Ruscia, the district administration, and our staff for their unwavering commitment to provide the best and safest educational experience for all of our children despite the prevailing challenges this academic year, and doing so often in the face of unclear or nonexisting governmental guidance. I also want to thank you for all your continued commitment to the Basis program. When the Basis program was started in 2017, it was a trailblazing commitment by our district. As we witnessed a reckoning in our country which invokes reflection on belonging and socio-cultural identity, we are fortunate the Basis work is in our classrooms. Basis demonstrates that our district is centered Basis demonstrates that our district is centered on pedagogical excellence and understanding of what our children need to be equipped with as they navigate the world around them now and in the future. I know that it is programs like basis that will help prepare my children and all the children in the district to lead lives that recognize the importance of and respect for differences and acceptance of others. Jean Lutz at one six nine Clemson Road. To the school board and superintendent, I wish to share, sorry, I wish to express my strong support and gratitude for the parents who have volunteered to serve on the parent guardian equity team and to thank all the teachers, administrators, and parents who have supported the basis program and by doing so embrace the challenge of making Haverford's educational environment the best it can be. I am deeply, deeply distressed that some parents have wrongly suggested that working to create an inclusive environment will detract from their children's education. As a parent of two children in the district and an educator myself, I know the opposite to be true. The basis program is a wonderful step forward for our district, for our children, and for our entire community. Educating our children to succeed in the twenty-first century requires that we prepare them to treat each other with compassion, understanding, and moral integrity. This is as important as teaching them to wash their hands. Study after study shows that students who feel like they belong are able to learn more. The basis program sets Haverford on the path towards teaching more math, more science, more reading, not less. Patty McGoldrick at one, one twelve North Druxel Avenue. I am writing to say thank you to the school board and to the administration for your dedication to our students during this unbelievably difficult year. My daughter is a current junior in the high school and has flourished at Haverford. This past year, there have been competing needs with, within our student body and no playbook to follow. I feel the board members and the administration have done an outstanding job of trying to meet the varying needs of our students, faculty, and staff. As a parent, I am very grateful that you've used your skills and expertise to lead us through this challenging time. I would also like to thank the school board and the administration for your ongoing support of the basis program. Young people can only thrive when they feel accepted for who they are. It is important to many of us that children learn not to just tolerate, but embrace the differences in others. I work at a local university and our corporate recruiters tell us constantly that they are looking to hire young people who are able to work in well diverse, able to work well in diverse environments. Therefore, the basis program isn't just the right thing to do, but the smart thing to do as well. This is from Julie Kimsey Carroll at thirteen fifty-nine Maryland Avenue. Dear Dr. Ruchi, Ms. Sarah Christensen, and the Haverford Township School District Board members, I am writing to express my support for the basis curriculum used throughout the district in support of our students' growth. As a social worker, mental health therapist in area schools for many years, I can attest to the positive effects of such programs for both academic and developmental achievement for young people. I am very concerned to hear of undermining comments and misinformation about the basis program being spread by various community members. I appreciate the statements of support by President Feinberg and other board members. It appears that we need more education of the public about the importance and goals of basis. I am also calling on you, Dr. Ruchi, to make a statement in support of the program and to clearly refute the misinformation being raised. As we can see throughout our country, leaders staying silent about misinformation can lead at least to confusion, rancor, and lack of trust. I am also writing to express my strong support for the development of the parent guardian equity team in the district. How I wish such a group had been in existence when my children were in school. I am particularly alarmed by the inappropriate request by various community members for the names and addresses of members of the parent guardian equity team. This type of reckless behavior is intimidating and only undermines the purpose of the team, creating a chilling atmosphere of hostility and fear. This is not the example we want to be setting for our young people. I call on you, Dr. Ruchi, to break your silence and speak in strong support of the parent guardian equity team and the ongoing need for an importance of anti-bias and anti-racist training. As a leader of our school district, please take this opportunity to be clear about what equity means and to push back women's misinformation and attempted intimidation. I have always been grateful for the overall positive experience both of my children had in the district schools. They graduated with honors and now are gratefully employed. I am dismayed to learn of the timidity of some district leaders over openly supporting such important issues as the basis curriculum and the implementation of equity for all. The values of standing up for truth, inclusion, and the safety of every member of our community are elemental to what our town and district should stand for. Let's show our students what accountability and integrity look like. Thank you for all the time and effort you continue to give the district. It has been a challenging, difficult year on many levels. I look forward to working with and supporting you in whatever ways I can to make our community more safe, welcoming, and equitable for all. Katie Begandy at two oh one Mill Road. Dear Haverford Township School Board Directors, I want to thank you for your comments during the January seventh meeting showing strong support for the district's basic program. From what I heard during the public comments, it sounded like there was a bit of misinformation about the basis program. Particularly, I was confused to hear that a few residents believe that the term equity means that every child in Haverford Township Schools will end up at the same place. If I believed that the school district of Haverford Township was implementing a program to ensure that all children think alike, talk alike, and act alike, I would join these neighbors in objection to the basis program. But this is not the case, and so I want to address the misinformation stated last week. First, equity has nothing to do with ensuring a uniform end product. In reality, equity means that everyone is treated fairly from the beginning so that they all are able to thrive and develop into their true, authentic, and diverse selves. Stated more simply, equity is akin to fairness. And as I repeatedly tell my daughter, who just so happens to be obsessed with fairness, fairness does not mean symmetry nor does it mean uniformity. Fairness does not mean that both of my children are forced to eat the same snack every day. Rather, it means that they were both given the opportunity to make their own snack choice. Unfortunately, not all children are equally welcomed to make feels, to feel safe at school. When children or adults do not feel safe, their minds are unable to learn. If children are unable to learn, then how will we ever achieve the learning goals desired by last week's commenters? The basis program will help ensure that children of different backgrounds and beliefs, belief sets are welcome to make feel safe at school so that their learning goals can be met and so that children throughout our district can feel comfortable further developing their differences. This is quite the opposite of trying to ensure that all children end up in the same place. As parents and educators know all too well, the concept of creating uniform children has no merit and is quite frankly impossible. Children truly have their own minds and their own spirits, and that is what the basis program is all about. The basis program opens the doors so that children can be diverse. It sounds like it should appeal to last, appeal to last week's commenters who identified themselves as having a wide spectrum of beliefs and values. The basis program will ensure that our children learn to honor a wide spectrum of beliefs and values, unless, of course, a set of beliefs and values are harmful to others. As a parent, I have many responsibilities among them are a duty to uphold the physical and mental wellness of my children and responsibility to teach them about actions and consequences and a responsibility to prepare them to survive and thrive in the real world when they come of age. I am in favor of the basis program and it supports these goals for my children and all the children in Haverford Township as they continue to develop into their unique selves. This is from Alexis Pasternak at six oh nine Woodland Drive. Dear School Board Members and Dr. Ruchi, George Allen Yancy, sociologist at Baylor University, wrote this past summer that we need solutions that drive us together, not pull us apart. That is the only way we will have sustainable pathways away from the racial alienation poisoning our society. We do not need to engage in more recrimination and name-calling. Victories by those techniques will face constant challenge and keep our society in turmoil. The way forward is to move forward together. I feel that adopting anti-racist theorem, theory, pursuing equity over equality and the theory of white fragility will likely not ensure long-term successes for anyone of any race. No solutions are offered. Therefore, we will be in a perpetual state of turmoil. The beautiful concepts of diversity and inclusion will be turned on their heads. But feelings will not win in the argument, and that is not what I'm trying to do. Board members and, and Dr. Ruchi, all that I'm asking is that you think long and hard about what you are implementing. I think we can all agree that we want our children to be critical thinkers, and this is a start. How can we make that hap- how we make that happen is another thing. And as Yancy said, doing this will be hard, extremely hard. But why, but why should we be surprised at that? Usually, the things worth having are hard. If families want to adopt anti-racism and white fragility theories and apply them in their own life, that is perfectly fine with me. I will continue to work to be kind and empathetic, and that is what I continue to teach my son to do. In the meantime, I kind, I'm kindly requesting that, that there be a school board policy implemented by February two thousand and twenty-one in which parents and taxpayers can have full access to daily lessons and curriculum online and parents and guardians receive notification of any concepts associated with critical race theory, specifically the anti-racism and/or white fragility approach ahead of time with the possibility of opting out. Thank you for your time. Andrew Pidgen at seventeen twenty-eight Hawthorne Avenue. Dr. Ruchi and School Board Members, I would like to start this message by thanking you for your time and effort on this board. I know that none of you signed up to face the public health challenges we are facing. I truly do believe you feel you have the best interest of our kids at heart. I would also like to thank the hardworking and dedication of our teachers. They have been as flexible as possible in making the best of an all-around bad situation. Having said that, you need to understand where I'm coming from. It is on me and other parents to fight for our children's future and children's education, so I apologize for anything below seems harsh, is become that important to me and my family. The first time I wrote to you, it was to let you know that virtual schooling was not working, especially for kids at such a young age. I am now writing to tell you that hybrid isn't much better. And in a way, it's worse because we get feedback from teachers about how much more engaged the kids are at school than they are on Zoom. The kids come home happy twice a week, then cry when unpacking a thirty-pound backpacky preparing for tomorrow's Zoom. While twice a week is surely better than zero, is a constant reminder of how things should be and how things are different are, are in other school districts. One of the things I do like, I do not like to say in front of my kids is it's not fair because frankly, the world isn't fair, but I feel to make my point to you, I must. Isn't, it isn't fair to my kids that we chose to live in Haverford Township. Think about that for a second. My kids are a distinct, distinct disadvantage because their parents have chose to live in Haverford Township and enroll them in a highly ranked Haverford School District. I bet it is not a statement that you ever thought that you would hear, is it? But when I look around, it's absolutely true. Throughout the school year, during varying levels of lockdown, Europe has kept their schools open. States like Florida have been open this entire school year. Catholic and private schools have been open this entire school year in our district. Neighboring school districts like Wissahick and Upper Dublin have their elementary school kids back five days a week. Springfield is going back at all levels, five days a week in early February. And all these places that brought their kids back five days a week in person learning, there has been no greater COVID problems than the problems we are currently facing in Haverford. The fact that my kids have spent half of this year at home on a computer, not learning, and half of this year going to school, forty percent of available school days, puts them at a considerable disadvantage, and that is not fair. Months ago, you recognized the need to get at least our elementary schools back in school five days a week, and you have, you have done nothing. There have been no plan to do this that I have made aware of. My kids' cohorts have six, eight, and ten kids in them. Are you telling me that the Catholic schools or Wissahick and Upper Dublin have less than twenty kids per class in them? No way. Do you really think that if Governor DeSantis or the Catholic Church's decision to be open five days a week was killing kids and teachers or causing uncontrollable spread throughout the area, it, it wouldn't be front-page news? Come on, we have the data. We know the test, we, we have the test districts. Nothing is happening in any differently in those districts that is happening in ours, which is only utilizing two of five available days. Hybrid isn't slowing the spread, is doing nothing but slowing the education of my children. We as parents have the right to determine what it is in our children's health interests. What they have experienced this year from the Haverford School District is anything but healthy. No one is forcing any child to attend in-person learning. If you decide the risks of COVID-nineteen are greater than the mental health and education crisis that these kids are going through, so be it. You have made arrangements for those parents. Those of us who feel differently also have the right to have our kids in person five days a week, the same as complete, complete, competing public schools or, or all Catholic schools are currently doing. Please open the schools for education five days a week and give the tax-paying parents the opportunity to make their own health decisions. Please do not, please do your best to provide a safer environment as possible for the remainder of the school year. This will give my kids a chance to recuperate from this nightmare of eleven months with no consistent schooling by an actual educator. This can also start the process of our kids getting caught up to other schools who long ago made the decision that in-person learning is critical for our children. Thank you for your time. Okay, Mr. Feinberg, the next comment is a, a group comment from approximately three hundred and thirty individuals with three hundred electric signatures. I can't read all the names on the list and their addresses, but their names and addresses will be posted as part of the public meeting minutes. If anybody wants to see them online. This is from Sandy Tayo and Christine Seawagon on behalf of, of the group. Dear Haverford Township School Board and administrators, we are writing to collectively voice our continued support for the belonging and social cultural identities in schools basis program. Although we do not always submit public comments to the school board to reiterate our support for this existing program, we are very happy and proud that the district implemented this program. By submitting this group comment, we would like to convey the enthusiastic and ongoing support for the basis program within the Haverford Township community. The comments against basis program at several recent board meetings fail to represent the sentiments of the majority of the Haverford Township residents. We wholeheartedly endorse the stated goal of the basis program to ensure that every member of our school community feels included, respected, and valued. The goal of inclusion applies to identities represented by the I in basis. It does not refer to welcoming all values, values that are sexist, racist, racist, homophobic, transphobic, antisemitic, or anti-immigrant in nature are in direct conflict with inclusion and belonging. Those values should not and cannot be welcomed. That is why it is essential that educating people about equity, belonging, and inclusivity is a priority for the district and the students and the families cannot act, opt out. Moreover, these lessons are in line with the Common Core principles to prepare students to flourish in their lives and careers as they encounter and engage with people of varied backgrounds. It is imperative that the school district continues to show strong support for the basis program. In addition, we would like to remind the board that the policy manual nine oh three states that the board president is able to interrupt public speakers if the presentation is out of order or not factual. When faced with repeated false statements regarding the basis program, the board members should act to request that the board president interrupt to provide clarification. We would also implore Dr. Ruchi and the SDHC board to state their support for the privacy of our parent guardian equity team and condemn public requests for the names and addresses of volunteers on the parent guardian equity team as such requests are inappropriate at best and threatening at worst. Thank you again for your actions in creating and supporting the basis program and your continued commitment to the Haverford Township community. Our last comment is from Samantha Hand at nine Fairfield Road. Good evening, School Board Members and Dr. Ruchi. Equity and anti-racist programs perpetuate racial stereotypes, compel discriminatory speech, and create hostile work, working environments that violate the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the United States Constitution. On Monday, we celebrated the life of the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a famous quote from Dr. King. The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. We are diverse and offer opportunities for all in the USA because of the work of Dr. King. The Marxist agenda presented as anti-racism and equity promotes racism. Separating people by color, gen- gender, sexual orientation, religion, religion, or political affiliation is moving backward. We're moving away from the good work of Dr. King. Not every taxpayer is in agreement with Marxism. Parents have the right to request written notification for material that is not part of math, science, language arts, or history in K to eight. Taxpayers should have full access to the curriculum online. Daily lessons need to be listed online for transparency. We are asking for a policy by February two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Anna. Next item on our agenda is reports from our students. We have Zoe Starr from the middle school and Erica Borby from the high school. Zoe, you want to start us off?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Zoe Starr, and I will be reporting for the middle school. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. The second marking period will be ending on Thursday, February second. We are all working very hard as the quarter ends, and we are all trying to start the new year off right. Many kids in our school were happy to celebrate and honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday. Our student council created and hung motivational posters for our school. Students in our school also painted little libraries, collected and donated clothing to cradles to crayons, participated in community trash and leave cleanups, packed and delivered food to local organizations and food banks, helped neighbors with house projects, wrote thank-you notes to veterans and healthcare workers, and donated time to record messages for people who utilize alternative communication devices. Several of our students will be attending the Delaware Valley Consortium of Excellence and Equality, or DVCE, Student Leadership Institute on Friday, January twenty-ninth. The annual, the annual institute will be held virtually this year. Students will participate in several sessions designed to cultivate learning, laughter, and preparing student leaders. That's about it. That's about all I have for today. I thank you so much for allowing me to present tonight.
Well, thank you for your report. Sounds like Monday was a pretty busy day. Have a good day.
Lots of activities, Zoe.
Erica.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry about that. My computer died, but I'm glad I made it back just in time. Good evening, staff, community, and members of the board. My name is Erica Borby, and it is an honor to be here tonight. On Monday, January eighteenth, students had off in order to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. and his extensive civil rights contributions. While it was a bit challenging to engage in service opportunities this year, Haverford students went above and beyond to honor his legacy with clubs like Young Democrats hosting a Zoom meeting where members crocheted plastic and yarn for local homeless shelters. The last day for PSAT registration was Friday, January fifteenth, with PSATs scheduled to be taken on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth. Zoom meetings, practice tests, and ten-minute math tip videos are being offered to students to ensure that all test takers are as successful as possible. As the second semester comes to an end, students are reflect, the first semester comes to an end. As the second semester comes to an end, students are reflect, the first semester comes to an end. Students are reflecting on the highs and lows of our hybrid semester. Students are thankful for our teachers and their consistent support these past few months, as well as excited for our second semester, thanks to the established comfort and familiarity of our hybrid schedule. First and second block finals will be on January twenty seventh and third and fourth block finals will be on January twenty eighth. January twenty ninth will be dedicated to final exam makeups as well as a transition day for students. Freshmen have finally completed their first ever high school semester and seniors are counting down the days till graduation. Mid-year transcript requests are being sent out so seniors can fulfill college requirements and keep prospective universities up to date on their grades. Clubs continue to meet virtually as well. Best buddies hosted their Name the Tune Kahoot game over Zoom today. And FBLA members will be attending a virtual regional awards ceremony on Monday, January twenty fifth. The senior planning committee is also hard at work brainstorming different ideas in order to make sure the class of twenty twenty-one has the best senior year possible. Last, but certainly not least, many of our winter sports teams are competing this season. And student athletes are allowed to have two adult spectators at home games. Wrestling is away at Ridley tonight. Girls and boys basketball is home tomorrow night against Springfield. And Ford Swim and Dive is away at Upper Derby tomorrow starting at three forty-five PM. All games will continue to be live streamed on the athletics YouTube channel, and I know our athletes will continue to bring home wins. It may be the end of the semester, but the Fords are still as energetic and determined as ever. I am grateful for this opportunity to present tonight, and I am looking forward to my next update in future weeks.
Thank you very much. It sounds like things are, things are moving, so that's great. Dr. Ruchi, it looks like we're back to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Zoe and Erica, it's always great to hear about what's happening in the schools, particularly since we don't see as much of it. These days, so thank you for paying that extra attention to creating visual images for us of what's happening in in your schools. You've both done a great, done a great job. A few things to update this evening, Mr. Feinberg. Just a public service announcement at our February eighteenth meeting. To further clarify the work of the district as it relates our basis work and as it relates to equity. Sarah Christensen and her team are putting together a presentation, which will again, you know, further educate folks, remind people. What the core of this work is about and also present on some of the results that we have seen, you know, of that work. So that's coming up on on February eighteenth. Yesterday, I sent out an email to community and staff members regarding the lack of the availability of vaccinations. Specifically, it seems specifically within Delaware County, that is not just my assessment alone. But coming from, you know, working with my colleague superintendents across the county, similar messages have gone out in several, several of the districts. And I I just feel we have a responsibility now to respectfully and responsibly advocate for our staff, you know, for our community. We hear a lot, we believe in doing everything we can to get our students in to in-person learning more than we currently are. And the vaccine is just another step that's going to get us, you know, get us closer to that. So. We are trying to advocate, as I said, you know, respectfully and and responsibly, but we will continue. To be advocates for our school system and trying to do everything we can to to get our students back. It's been a long time since we've talked about some of the mitigation strategies and I just another public service announcement, you know, want to remind people of the importance. You know, of wearing, wearing masks and social distancing and and that social distancing concept of six feet. As we start now understandably to receive emails from parents asking, you know, please, can you revisit? Can you bring students back into into school? Within Delaware County, the Chester County Health Department is our health authority, and there has been no movement. On the six feet distance between between student desks. I'll share with you, it is the hope of many of the superintendents that if we were to be successful in obtaining vaccines and getting everyone vaccinated. That we could petition the Chester County Health Department to reconsider that, to lessen it in some way. But as long as that requirement for six feet of social distancing is in place. We have no other alternative other than what we are doing right now, just because of the logistics and the physical limitations. That exist with within our buildings. We encourage parents to monitor the number of COVID cases on our website, just as a reminder. With the new requirements that were issued. From the Pennsylvania Department of Education in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Department of Health. There are thresholds at each one of the levels that once we meet them, our schools must close. We are in constant contact with the Chester County Health Department about our mitigation strategies. In an effort that should we reach that number and be required to close, that we are closing for no more than a day. And actually, I shouldn't say close, I should say return to virtual learning. Because, you know, students, it would still be a school day, students would be at home learning. But those counts are updated every day. We trans, we moved away from updating just on Sundays. So that parents could have an idea of when we are getting getting close to that. With that in mind, we also want to remind people. If there is anyone who lives in your household. Who tests positive for COVID, please keep your children home. Regardless of how they feel, they are considered a close contact. And should not come into our schools. Our building principals, your children's teachers will work with you. But please do not send your child to school because they seem fine. As a mom myself, I get it, like they seem fine. They're okay to be in school. But if there is someone who resides in the house who tests positive for COVID, the children should not be, you know, should not be coming to school. Along those same lines, if you find yourself in a situation where typically you are coming to our schools for food distribution. And you or the person who typically comes to the school to pick up the food, test positive for COVID, call your building principal. They will make arrangements, they will work with you so that you do not have to come to the school in order to to get that food for your family. So we just, just a few reminders as we all experience COVID fatigue. And just, you know, forget about some of these things, just a couple of, couple of reminders about that. And if it's okay, Mr. Feinberg, I'll move into the next item because it's actually our recognition of school board directors.
Please.
January is school director's recognition month, and that provides us with an opportunity to express our appreciation. And our gratitude for the endless dedication of our board members. Each member of our school board engages in this work on a voluntary basis, receiving no compensation for their time, effort and energy that they devote to our community. They are motivated purely by the desire to work as a system for the betterment of the children in our schools. And while they do not receive monetary perks that other organized boards and different entities may. Their reward is the interaction with students even virtually. And the success of witnessing work that comes to fruition. Whether that be the establishment of a new course, a new club, a new elementary school. A new wing onto onto a high school or the implementation of of some new curriculum. The time dedicated by our board members extends well beyond two Thursday meet, two Thursday evenings each month when they are here for the for the public. Our board members represent the district on various community boards and state organizations, which require time to prepare actively and participate in that work. And they review materials and read materials prior to each one of these board meetings and liaison meetings that are held, held throughout the month. Each one of our board members received a little packet, little envelope at their home today. Because, thanks Dave for holding that up there, because we were not able to be physically present in the room. So we'll ask you if you would open that now. This is what would have been on your table by your seat in in the boardroom for you. We feel that it's very appropriate. Given what we are experiencing this this year. So you can put those on and I will say to the public. What we have provided for each one of our board members is just a note of appreciation on behalf of the students within the school district. An H pride pin that hopefully they can, then they can proudly wear when we are out and about. And given the current times that we are in, as you can see from some of some of our board members. I have referred Ford's face mask. You are leaders. You are models within within our community. And we hope that you will wear those masks and modeling, a good choice to wear that mask for all of our our community members and wear it with your H pride. So on behalf of my colleagues and the students, thank you for everything that you do for all of us to make this such a wonderful district. In which to live, to work, to learn and to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. I. Bridget and I have been attending these. Twice a week statewide PSBA board leadership meetings. Pretty much since March, and on the meeting last week, there was some discussion of. You know, some of the, some of the positive. Aspects of. Living through this COVID experience and one of the things that struck me is that we have this. Whole crop of school board members, forty-five hundred of us statewide. Who. Used to think that there were, you know, issues in their school districts pre-COVID. And it's really helped to put things into a different perspective. And I think we're, you know, we've, we're growing a crop of. School directors that. Are going to be significantly more resilient. Going into the future, once we get through this thing and I certainly want to thank all my board colleagues again because. You know, they certainly didn't know what they were getting into.
This year, anyway.
You know, and none of it's taken for granted, folks, and really appreciate. All your efforts and commitment and contributions, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Larry.
Very happy to serve. Thank you, Larry, and thank you, Dr. Ruchi, and thank you for the mask and pin.
I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't hear the question.
This qualified conversation, this is our.
That's it, so don't lose it.
Okay, moving right along. Next item on our agenda is a construction update. Ken Matthews from CB Development, how are you, Ken? You're muted. We can't hear you. How about now? Still can't hear you.
Ken, do you want, do you want to call? Do you want to try coming in on the phone? For the, for the audio, do you want us to go on to Bob and come back to you? All right, and you can text me and we'll see if we can get you, get you worked out there.
Okay. Mr. Regal, you want to give us a first look at the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget?
Okay. Well, we have a little presentation. This first look has been provided to the finance liaison meeting last week and. A budget this size is always put together as a site-based. Bottom-up budget, meaning that departments put budgets together. The school buildings have allocations, the technology department has a, has a budget they put together. Curriculum, pupil services, all the way across the board and. They have a deadline in December that they need to put their budget together. They put in requests also for personnel. We accumulate all those budgets and then we put together mostly contract items like, for instance, your. All your salaries are based on contracts and and benefits are based on, based on contracts or regulations and then. And then we also have debt service, which is a big component because of all the borrowing we have done to build all our capital plan and. You accumulate all those and put it together and hopefully it comes out with a small number, but. If we go to the next slide. Anna, we can, this, these are the assumptions, they're similar to in the past, but numbers are a little different. Act one index for us is three point oh percent. The downside is that in the year of countywide reassessment, you're, you have to maintain the index from the prior year. So our two thousand twenty twenty-one index is two point six percent. So instead of three percent, we are ceiling for increasing is two point six percent. And that's mainly also because of the fact that we do not have an act, act one exception. If you remember. In prior years, we got act one exceptions because our special ed. But our expenditures increased higher than the index and we were allowed to increase it proportionally in our percentage increase of our millage. The P S E R S employer contribution rate didn't go up very much. It's at thirty-four point nine four percent. So for every dollar spent on salaries, thirty-four point nine four gets sent to P S E R S. We do get half of that back on the revenue side as a subsidy from the state, so it's really half of that. Due to the tax reassessment. January first, we always get, always get a certified assessment, no matter what year it is. And then any changes from January to when we, May, when they cut it off for the real estate taxes. Is our assessment, which we apply our millage to get our tax money. On the next screen, you'll see it that, but we also have debt service in here of about three hundred and eighty-five thousand for phase two. We were kind of hesitant, hesitating on phase two because of some of the issues with the pandemic and how we would come out financially, but. We are sitting pretty well. So we did add part of the, the debt service for phase two. There's also capitalized interest, the two thousand nineteen A bonds, I believe it is, the new money bonds. We did capitalize interest of eight hundred fifty thousand and that's essentially your. You're, you're borrowing extra money. And the rates are low and then you're able to manipulate the, the funds that you receive to be able to. To phase in the debt service at a longer rate so that it's not all hitting you all at once. So that, that was a large dollar bond issue. That's the thirty-seven million dollar bond issue that is paying for Lindwood, so. It needed to be phased in a little slower than just in one or two years, so. So that gets to be a credit against our debt service. If you go to the next slide. These are the new positions that are in this budget, so. When you're putting the first look budget together, you are kind of loading it up. You're putting every, everybody's. Wish list and there are parameters, schools have allocation limits and so forth. There are limitations to what they can put in. But they do put in it and and we evaluate it once we get the numbers and see what they're like and. See whether we need a teaching positions or one psychologist, one assistant principal. But if we don't put them in and consider them, then, you know, we might later on have to add them to the. we might later on have to add them to the budget. So down below, there's student tech positions that was, I think, Dr. Rishi, I don't know who brought that up, but that that's some of the students can learn while helping out our our tech department and learn some of the tech tech skills that they have. So if we go to the next slide, this is actually the reconciliation of our old assessment to our new assessment. Our old assessment was three point one seven one billion dollars. When they did the reassessment, as you can see, it it pretty much doubled to six billion, three hundred sixty million dollars. So we're only allowed to collect the same amount of tax that we would have collected with the assessment at three point one billion. So we had to adjust the 2021 milage rate to, you know, make the math equation work out. And as you can see, we were at thirty three point five seven nine mills for the 2021 school year. Converting that so that we're bringing in the same amount of money is sixteen point seven four five eight mills. So if you take the mills and multiply it by the assessment, you're you're going to get tax levy a one hundred and six million dollars, five hundred three thousand seven hundred eighty seven. We get tax relief money. That's the gambling money that it has been allocated to the school district. And it comes in the form of a reduction in our assessment, which everyone gets the same amount of money. I think last year was about a hundred and eighty dollars. So that hasn't been calculated yet, but has to be taken off the bottom line. And then it comes in a form of a subsidy from the state. So you have a net tax levy of a hundred and four million for 2020 21. And the collection rate that we had put in last year was a little lower than the ninety seven point three percent that we normally have because of the fact that the pandemic, we felt that people the collection rate would be lower. I don't think that's panning out that way, but once we get the get closer to all hundred percent collected, we'll find out how much we brought in and and we might end up adjusting that, which would bring us in a little more revenue. So the value of mill is now six million dollars. If you increase your millage sixteen point seven four five eight by two point six percent, you're going to end up with an additional two million, six hundred twenty three thousand. So we add that to the to the 2021 tax revenue when we do the 21 22 budget. So if we go to the next slide.
If I could, for a minute, before you go to the next slide, you know, for the for the homeowner who is looking at the recent reassessment. Can you point out here what what the what number should be of the greatest interest? So that you know, some homeowners felt like there's a possibility that their taxes were going to double. Okay. Reassessment and and I know you were you were taking phone calls from some folks and explaining the millage rate to them and that the millage rate was also going to change.
So if you want to, if they want to look at it from the perspective of 2021, they would take the 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 changed assessment, multiply it by the sixteen point seven four five eight and then divide by a thousand. And that would give them their taxes under their new assessment. The equivalent taxes as they as they had for 2021. Now, if you go to the next slide, I'll show you down below the sixteen point seven four five eight with a two point six percent increase. You can see down below is seventeen point one eight one two mills. So if they take their changed assessment, their new reassessment, multiply it by seventeen point one eight one two and then divided by a thousand. They'll get the the taxes that we're proposing right now for 21 22 with a two point six percent increase. So it's pretty simple. Just take the assessment, multiply it by the seventeen point one eight one two and then divide by a thousand and you'll get your 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 tax bill. And this is one, this is a financing, the budget that I do every year. And I have, we have detail in the next couple of slides, but the revenue that we have before the tax increases a hundred thirty one million, forty six thousand. Expenditures are a hundred thirty seven million right now. A hundred thirty seven million, five thirty, a lot higher than the revenues. And we do have a budgetary reserve that's not funded by tax dollars. So so the shortfall is six million, four hundred ninety one thousand, which is pretty large. But you're also talking about our first look or, you know, when everything is put into the budget. There's our our taxation at the two point six. That's our ceiling. Two point six percent. We can't go any higher than that right now. So that that would bring in the two million, six hundred twenty three thousand that we had on the prior slide. And that leaves three million, eight hundred sixty eight thousand that we have to reduce in order to get balance the budget. So that's that includes those new salaries. That includes a lot of add-ons that, you know, we have to evaluate and and get that number down because to balance the budget. So as you can see, the two point six percent. What I did was I took the the I I calculated the average assessment because you can take the total assessment and divide it by the number of parcels. And I think there's seventeen million, one hundred fifty five parcels, I think. And if you divide that six billion dollar number into there, you're and multiply it by the millage. You're getting an average tax increase of a hundred fifty five dollars. I think last year, the average tax increase was about a hundred and forty dollars. So or a hundred and eighty, excuse me, a hundred and eighty.
Bob, Bob, you said seventeen million parcels. I think it's seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand parcels. Yeah, I yeah, yeah, seventeen thousand, one hundred fifty, I said. Let's go to the next slide. Here's the revenue budget. As you can see, I have two two actual years in 2021 budget year. And the next month or so, we'll have a projection of the 2021 budget. But as you can see, the current real estate revenue is the same because we had to keep it the same. And this is before adding the tax increase. And we did give additional money for transfer tax because we feel like with the interest rates low, that'll we'll be able to bring in money there. And most likely in 2021, that million eighty thousand will be higher than that. But tax delinquencies, we have to get a feel for what's what hasn't been paid as of December 31st and what's leaned and what what would be delinquent. And then we made estimates based on state sources of funds. As you can see on the right, eighty point four percent of our revenue comes from local sources, which is large. Only eighteen percent comes from state sources and one point three three percent from federal sources. So one of the biggest numbers on the state sources is down at the bottom. It's the retirement revenue. I remember I told you had twenty million dollars on the expenditure side and we get ten million dollars back in a form of a subsidy on both our social security and our retirement. So that's why the thirty four point four six or whatever I had back there is really half of that. So if we go to the expenditure, there's three pages of expenditures because there's so many line items. But the first part is a breakdown of of two years actual and two years budget. And you can see the salaries, the total salaries are sixty two million. It covers probably the largest amount is the teachers, which is the second from the top. The right column is a variance. So you can see that the difference between bud budget to budget from 2021 21 22 is one point eight million dollars. If you go to the second grouping, that's your benefits. We do have a zero increase projected for medical. But it's a hundred ninety two thousand higher because that's the medical that's assigned to the the new positions. So down below, you can see the retirement contribution is twenty one million. The social security is one four point six. And we're looking at one million, four hundred and seventy four thousand dollar variance from the prior year's budget. The next section is professional services. One of the biggest components of professional services is IU services. You can see the IU services is two million, two thousand compared to the prior year's budget of one point eight million. So you're almost two hundred thousand over that. Yeah, there's other professional which covers different varying varying areas, but I think part of it is legal services, part of it is we had some more money for subs. So it was is a group of components that that are in professional services that that we use that are up. And then you can also see technology support because we're doing a lot of remote learning and we have a lot more computers. So the support on the technology is up. We'll evaluate all those numbers. And, you know, to refine the numbers and get them down to where they should be. But if we go to the next slide, we can see the next area. This covers purchased property services. This is everything from disposal services, electricity, water repairs, copiers, maintenance. There's rentals, there's leases that we have equipment leases for both facility and transportation. We have and that's up three hundred thousand, that whole area. The next column is is other professional services and that includes primarily, most of that is the special ed tuition, charter school tuition, vote tech tuition, the contribution to the Delaware County Community College. And those are the probably the largest one that covers all our insurances, our whole fleet of insurance from general property liability to bonding insurance to E and O, underground tank insurance, athletic insurance is all in that section. And you but you can see the largest increase is the charter schools because of the increase in the number of kids right now that are are attending charter and cyber schools. And that increased from three hundred thousand to over nine hundred thousand dollars on that line item. We go to the next slide. There's supplies up at the top, supplies. We did have a large budget in 2021 for books and that is not as high this year. So there's a reduction there. But this is pretty much other than maybe general supplies. And I think the diesel fuel number that came for transportation might might be, there might be an error there because that shouldn't be a hundred twenty thousand dollars higher, but that's number has been put in and 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 that'll number will probably go back down. But as you can see, we're pretty flat in this area. The next area is equipment. We have about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in additional equipment in this budget compared to 2021. And then the last two areas are primarily debt service. If you'll see, you'll see interest on bonds and then you'll see principal on bonds. And that is our annual payment for debt service on all the capital projects, all the the building that we've done. Some of that is new. And what they do is they wrap around the new debt service around the old debt service and the maturities go out far farther so that when when the old debt service disappears, then the new debt service comes into play and what it does is levels out your debt service. So once we're done with these projects, our debt service will be level for about ten to twelve years if we do don't do any more projects. But this year, as you can see, is probably the biggest year for these projects where increases and it's a million, one point five million dollars in increase in debt service. After that, we're pretty much home free as far as not totally, but pretty close to being home free as far as all the debt service on the high school projects. It also includes the climate control for the two elementary schools and the and Lindwood Elementary. But this year is the the year that where the debt service really hit. So if we go to the next slide. These are the cost drivers. And if you go through all those lines of expenditures and you look at all the lines that have significant or material increase variances and you add them together, they pretty much come close to the 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 bottom total for how much the art our expenditures are increasing from 2021 to 21 22. And you can see salary increases for contractual are on the top and then new salaries are next. And then salary and benefits is for both of those increases. IU services, capital maintenance, we added back the three hundred thousand in capital maintenance that we took out last year for budgetary reasons. Computer repairs, charter school increase and so forth, and debt service on the bottom. So these are the areas we concentrate from now until the proposed final budget and then the final budget to to look at ways to reduce these expenditures so that we can balance our budget. If we go to the next slide. Even though we have, you know, that that large number, if you take the 10 year average of the increases that the district has had. Our average increase is only two point eight five percent, which is very good. Yeah. We're you know, there's a lot of low numbers we did have in 2021, a three point two two percent increase because we took the exception for building program, but two point eight five percent over a 10 year period is very good. The next slide. This is the opt out version at the finance liaison meeting. There's two different ways of moving forward with the budget. One is to adopt a preliminary budget and then going through a lot of channels and then sending it to the state and then you go and and then you 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 go through some other steps and then you're you in April, you do the proposed final budget and adopt the final budget in June. But if you're not going to change your tax number, which or raise your tax number, let's put it this way, above the index, you have the ability to do the what they call the opt out version, which you present the budget and you provide the state with just your tax information. And then you submit it on the by February 2nd. And then you don't have to do all the state reporting that you in January and February that you normally do. And I think we did that a couple of years ago, first year I came here. And then we can just move forward with finance liaison meetings in February, March and April, as we refine the budget. And then get to April 22nd where we adopt the proposed final budget and then the final budget. Anybody have any questions?
Questions from the board. Antoinette.
Yeah, thanks. I guess my main question is the the six million. I don't know. Can we go back to the it's only a couple of slides ago, one, yeah, that one. So that like the you know, that one or the other one, but like a six point four million difference between, you know, the the revenue and the, you know, this, this, you know.
Well, that's the that's the six point four million dollar increase from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Okay. Can we go back?
As so increases in line items, the variance. Right there. See, your budget for 2021 was thirty one hundred thirty one million. And then your 21 22 expenditure budget is a hundred thirty seven million.
Okay, so maybe we need to go back farther than I guess I was just trying to ask about what in a normal year when the the first budget is proposed, I remember from last year that it was. I remember from last year that it was also. You know, it needed to be refined to get down to the actual number that we were anticipating. The budget would be, and so I was just wondering if this year was exceptionally higher than in previous years or around the same as that first budget number.
It's probably around the same, but you know, not, not exactly. But if you go to that slide, Anna, with the cost drivers on it, one of the things there, Antoinette. You know, we are looking at the enrollment projections and.
And it go the other way.
Our enrollment projections are a couple of years old now and they're also impacted by COVID hybrid, Haverford, you know, Haverford Online. So we're coming right out with the first budget with probably a little more positions than we typically would have. So one way that you could look at it here, Antoinette, is to say like, okay, so which of these areas would we be looking at? You know, for potential, potential reductions. And the first that we would start at is the salaries because anything that and the salaries would be the staffing positions. Because if even if we change one, that will impact the new salaries and the benefits. So it, you know, impact both of those those lines there. Then we would also take a look at the charter school tuition and we'll go through student by student. Are there any that are, you know, in 12th grade? You know, are there any that we feel, you know, we're just in for this year? Talk with folks in the curriculum office who who try to talk to people before they're going into into charter schools. Take a look at what what's driving that diesel fuel. So like they're the conversations that we will start to have now. And then, you know, if we still need to do something, you know, we'll look then at that capital maintenance and what's. Projected for capital maintenance that might be able to move into the capital committed that we had talked about after the finance liaisons now.
I mean, it's possible to move, for instance, the 300,000 capital maintenance to, you know, we set up this capital. A fund balance committed to capital and you could actually move, you know, that money to there because that's coming straight. From a fund balance to the capital fund and then paid out of there. So it's not part of the budget process, so one time expenditure. And, you know, you you look at the numbers like the 120,000 for diesel fuel and that's not, that's probably was a an error in input. And the debt service, we can probably, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, people put a lot of information in into these budgets and that. And and it's not that, you know, it's easy to make a mistake or or to to. You know, you multiply the gallons times the rate that the IU provides and and maybe come out with the wrong number. So we have almost, you know, you have the 768,000 in new salaries. If you add the benefits to that, that's probably close to 1.2 million dollars for that line item. For new salary, so. So there, you know, there's a lot to look at here. It's. And to get that number down.
Great, yeah, I think those were really helpful from both of you, so I really appreciate that. And I guess I just wanted to get sort of a sense of. How 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 high this hurdle was to get over, but it seems like it's it's not abnormal to start here.
I've been doing it 33 years, every budget has been larger in January than June by a lot. So that's just the way it is. And it's because you're, it's a site based budget from called the bottom up budget and it's starting from, you don't take. For instance, you don't take every line item and multiply it by 2.5% and then you're done. You're actually putting the budget together in all its components. Every individual salary is recalculated and put in at at it's 2122 rate. And and so you're putting a lot of detail in there and and that takes time to go through the detail. Once it all gets accumulated and and then to look at, you know, what are the potential reductions there?
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Antoinette. Bridgette?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments and I appreciate Dr. Ruscis kind of interjection of questions about enrollment and selection. Of, you know, in person and hybrid and. Online and charter school because I think, you know, when we get a presentation, that's a lot of numbers and pages of spreadsheets. It's helpful to remember that, like, here's a list of cost drivers, but the real drivers are education program. And the students in our school and what we need to provide to support a quality education, right? So that is like understanding our enrollment. I think we'll hear soon about a demographic study that will help inform that. The salary and the positions in the school is is based on trying to have enough staff for different scenarios. I understand this is a model that or a budget that's presented, assuming that the fall starts in more typical schools open. Our kids are in our buildings, but I think, you know, we will have to survey families and see about. The, you know, Haverford Online and how many people will prefer to stay with that learning method on versus being in school. And because that affects staffing, I think the charter school line item here is significant. And I think it points to a reason why we as a district and in kind of coordination with. School directors across the state are constantly advocating for charter school payment reform. That is a big ticket item, but our district isn't as adversely affected by payments to outside school providers as as many districts around us and across the state. So I think having this number in here is important to understand. The issue of charter payments and as Dr. Ruscis said, that that kind of working with the families in our district to try to get kids to. You know, choose to to come back to our schools. I would say that. The 300,000 of capital maintenance, I I I would be a proponent of. Using the reserve that we've allocated from prior year surpluses for that purpose. I just, I think that's a, you know, a good use of that surplus that we'd had before. And I just wanted to note that the the debt service number, I think early in the presentation, you said that it's a big number. But just to put it in context, the total of 12 million dollars is less than 10% of our budget to. You know, essentially pay for us to be in our buildings, which I think is not a. Unreasonably large percentage or an abnormally large percentage of a school's budget to go to debt service. So just wanted to kind of put that in there that it is, it is a number that's manageable and is kind of in line with. What schools allocate for for that kind of cost of funding their buildings.
Thanks, Bridgette. Dave?
Thank you. Yeah, Bridget mentioned the 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 charter school tuition cost that I question about that as well. About do we break down between the cyber charter versus brick and mortar charter schools for 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 that number or not?
It's all cyber.
Cyber.
That's that's all cyber. Okay, that's what I, that's kind of what I thought. And that represents, I mean, last year, I I I'm I'm assuming that that with COVID, we started to increase in that number. From from a from a budget last year, is this, this. It is going off of that trend or is it going off of enrollment numbers? And I'm just curious where the where the number.
It's COVID.
It's all COVID.
Pretty much.
I believe it's about 54 students. There's a few that are special ed and then they get the larger tuition of about 36,000.
And we're seeing this in every district statewide.
Yeah, I figured you know that, Larry, that's. When you put people, I know, also, just real quick, Laura Crispin had a question as well. She's having trouble with the hand raise button, so just if you can go to her, she has something as well, so.
Sorry, Laura, if you can't put your hand up, you don't get the.
I know, I know. Yeah, I don't have a hand raise feature anymore, it's gone now. I don't know where it went, so I don't know if maybe I was added as a, I don't know, non speaking panelist or something. Anyway, whatever, it's fine, it's fine. I'm not the biggest problem today. Um, so Bridget and Dave kind of already asked one of my questions, which was about the charter school. Do we get a sense that that 640,000 is going to kind of go back down after the pandemic? Or?
We would hope, we would hope that, we would hope that it would, you know, that it would go back down. It depends on some of the reasons why people may have opted for that.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. And then I just wanted to clarify one more time, the 1.5 million debt service, that is for phase two of the high school. Plus HVAC at the two elementary schools and the roof, is that correct?
No, well, all of it is, all of it is combined for all the projects. The debt service slowly over a number of years for Linwood for.
Okay.
Phase one, we borrowed the money for Linwood and phase and phase one. But we're putting money in for. Phase two. Phase of the HVAC projects really don't, the debt service doesn't kick in until the next year. But it's not a large, as large, it's probably not even a third of this number. And that'll be the last increase and then it'll level off for 10 to 12 years, so.
Okay, great, yeah, I just wanted to be clear, I understood all the different capital projects and kind of where they fell into this. So, okay, good, thank you for that. And then I guess my last question is about staffing costs. So the staffing cost projections here are for sort of under normal operating conditions. So does this include any? I guess this current year, we're using a lot more substitute teaching than usual and so that's increasing our current staffing. Are we projecting that? We're probably going to be doing some pandemic learning again, maybe for at least some part of the the next academic year. Are we including any potential increases in? Staff costs due to substitute teachers and things like that in this budget or not?
Actually not as much substitute teachers as it's, I'll describe it right now as a big what if? And that's what we need to narrow down. So some of that is, well, what if we have a segment of our our community who wish to remain in Haverford Online? But it's not enough that we can reassign a teacher from that grade level. So that's where, you know, we need to start getting better data and and a better perspective, which I know is going to be difficult. Because people aren't going to know right now what they, you know, what they will will be doing for September.
2021, 22's budgets been put together almost like we're going back to a normal.
Okay.
School year and. You saw what happened with 1920, you know, when the pandemic, we actually really had a lot of savings. But I think there's been a lot of adjustments in 2021, so that probably, you know, we're probably not going to get the same amount of savings. But I'm not, you know, I haven't really looked at the projection in that in that much detail, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, those are my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions from the board? Bob, I got a quick one for you. Could you just refresh my memory and tell, tell us what the charter school tuition rates are for regular ed and special ed for the district now?
They're probably about 13,000 for regular ed and about 36,000 roughly, I think, or a little higher for special ed, so.
And if we had to just give a ballpark number for what it costs us to educate a kid in our online. School, you know, what what's that number look like?
Mr. Feinberg, Nicole can actually, Nicole is with us tonight and Nicole Battistelli can talk, can talk about, you know, about those numbers.
I think sometimes when the people in the charter school. A couple of parents had called and they said, well, the money's following the student. But really, it's taking money out of the school district's budget. And we're not, we're not getting any efficiencies of scale in the sense that, you know, you can't say, okay, we can reduce a teacher. Because if kids are coming from all over the different buildings and stuff and going to the charter schools, it's actually costing the district more money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, I have, unfortunately, I don't have the updated PDE 363 with the cost for this current school year. But last year it was 12,486 dollars for a student in general education and it just disappeared. 34,000, hold on one second, 34,562 dollars for a student receiving special education services.
That's special ads, the special ed services could be as minor as occasional speech and language therapy.
Correct, so, yeah, and last year we had roughly 12 students. Pre-COVID out in cyber charter schools. And now it's around 54, I think Bob said, so, and that's all COVID related. And Mr. Feinberg, you could remember a long time ago, when I think I first presented to the school board, we had about 60 students out in cyber charter charter school before. The Haverford Online program, so we're kind of right back up to where we were when we were before we had an online program.
Hopefully we can bring them back, you know. So, thank you for that. Any other questions for Bob? Bridget, your hands up or did you just forget to put it down? Okay, have we resolved our technical difficulties with Ken Matthews?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ken.
All right, we solved the problem. So thank you, just do a kind of a brief update where we are at Linwood. So right now, you know, I think everybody can see the work's continuing on the facade of the building. Inside, things are really taking shape. You can see the terrazzo behind me throughout the hallways. It's probably about 90% done, other than the cafeteria area. So we're really getting down to it, we're in the process of negotiating the extended time with the contractors, which. Most likely the schedule is going to slide to probably around toward the end of March to finish up most of the building. End of March, early April, so, you know, the substantial completion was originally February 1. So, you know, with the COVID shutdown, that that's what really makes the slide happen, so. But other than that, things are moving along well, so. Tonight we have, as we normally do, we're starting to finally kind of get some of these change orders processed. So you do have some in front of you, some are typical course, some are COVID related. But wanted to see if anybody had any questions about that, any one in particular.
Excuse me, questions from the board?
Regarding the change orders. We had talked in the prior meeting about making some adjustments to the cafeteria. Can you just confirm that these change orders aren't yet related to that additional modification of the building?
No, Bridget, those, so some of those modifications are just being, were just sent to the contractor. So we'll start to see them trickle in now over the next two to three board meetings so that we can get moving with that work and try it. You know, that it probably will trickle a little more into April, end of April to complete that. But the rest of the building will be completed ahead, but you'll start to see them very soon.
I have a really quick question just on the timeline. Because so, you know, as maybe should have been expected because of the shutdown with COVID, where the the timeline is sliding a little bit. But we, you know, that won't affect. The the building actually be completed on time, which was the students weren't expected to be in the building until the start of the next school year. So this doesn't, you know, I mean, it changes the timeline, obviously, for when it's completed, but it shouldn't change the timeline for getting students in the building. And also being able to demolish the old building after the school year, is that right?
That's correct, that's correct, none of that timeline is affected at all.
Thank you.
So then, as we, over at the high school, you can see a lot more equipment out there. Really trying to get all the underground stormwater work done. They'll be starting foundations here any day. We had to move some things out of the way for the new bit, new. some things out of the way for the new, new addition. Uh, so, uh, we have, uh, a lot of equipment released, those type of things. So everything's trending very well at the moment. Uh, steel is supposed to be on site by the middle of February, which is hard to believe. It will be here before you know it. So, um, all, all in all, things are, are moving along as expected. Uh, contractors are, have been good to work with, so. Um, all, all good things. Um, and then we also, uh, this evening have in front of you some additional service for KCBA, kind of encapsulating some of the discussions with the board and looking at the area behind the auditorium and those bathrooms. So really want to, uh, capture that area as part of the, uh, we'll call it the phase two music classroom wing addition work, uh, to really kind of complete that entire area of the building. So, uh, that's what's in front of you this evening to approve KCBA to continue with that work.
Thank you, Ken.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, Ken. Looks great over there at Linwood. It just knocks me out every time I go, I go by the building.
Yeah, really. It'll be great to see it, see it come to fruition here soon.
All right. Well, thanks a lot. We've had a request
Thank you all.
For a brief seven-thinning stretch before we continue. So if you would like to, you know, stand up and stretch it out a little bit. Oh.
Ready for my brain break?
Next item on our agenda is board liaison reports, and we have three of them this evening. Uh, so Antoinette, if you want to start us off with policy?
Don't think we've met since the last meeting. Am I missing something?
Hmm, no, I'm not gonna argue with you.
Greg, I'm right, right?
You, you are, and you'll recall that we had, we had been scheduled, uh, as a group for, uh, the eighteenth, which of course was the, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, celebration day. So we moved that, so we'll be meeting on Monday and you will have plenty to report to the board at the following meeting, right?
That's right. I'm back to you, Larry.
Thank you both. Bridget, finance?
Okay, on the finance liaisons met on the fourteenth, um, and liaisons are Larry, me, Laura, and Ari. Um, in addition to, to going through the first look at the budget, which was just well-covered, um, the other agenda item was um, consultation with PFM, um, and they had prepared an analysis, uh, regarding, um, some scenarios for the next, um, couple of rounds of bond financing for our capital projects. Um, the scenario presented, um, just under ten million dollars to be raised sometime this year, um, in the middle of the year. Um, and that would support phase two of the high school project. Um, and then this would be followed by, um, just under seven million dollars of financing in twenty twenty-two, and that would pick up, um, the climate control projects and roof work at Chatham and Cooper Town. Um, and all in those would, um, complete what has been kind of sixty-one million dollars of, um, financing and refinancing to get through these, um, significant capital projects, uh, since late twenty eighteen. Uh, the two upcoming bonds would be structured, um, and this is what Bob was mentioning, that the annual debt service obligation kind of doesn't increase significantly with, um, estimates now showing it goes from like twelve point three to twelve point five million in our peak years of debt service carry. Um, one advantage about talking about raising, um, money now is that the rates are very low, uh, and PFM reports that there's been a lot of demand for issuances. Um, so the timing is right, but, um, probably more importantly than trying to time the market exactly right is to make sure that, um, our capital plan aligns with the timing of the projects, so the phase two work at the high school and, uh, the liaisons wanted to make sure, um, as, as Ken had mentioned, the conversation about, um, some additional improvements to include in that music fitness wing to bring in, um, some expanded restroom capacity and, and make some adjustments to storage. We want to make sure that that's well scoped out, um, so that, uh, when we raise the money, we, um, have that aligned with the project. Um, but, uh, so even if that kind of delays the timing of the proposed, like, ten million dollar bond for a little bit, um, we're still in a good position with, um, the amount of funding that we have available from our prior bond issuance. So we, we've got some time to, to make sure things align. Um, and that was the finance report.
Thank you, Bridget. Next up, Dave, what do you have for us on facilities?
Sure, the facilities committee, uh, met on Tuesday, so I'm sorry, I didn't get a report out earlier, but, uh, just didn't have the time to. Um, we, we met with some of the, with, with the firm who, um, we have looked at for our enrollment study. I, I, I sent a couple of questions. Some of the things were regarding how they would, um, calculate online versus, versus, in, versus, in school individuals. They indicate that, that school age children coming in, uh, has, while it's decreasing in which a school, it's increasing in middle school and, and, and high school. And liaisons had an opportunity to, to test them a couple of questions. If we were to, um, move on with this study, it would take about, I believe, two months to be completed. So a couple of things on that. Um, Ken, Ken, and I believe Bridget mentioned a little bit about some of the, some of the potential additions or alterations, I guess, to, to the face, to face to high school project that would raise, that would likely raise the cost of that project by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but it would result probably in a better overall product. It would, uh, increase the size of the bathrooms, um, add, add, add a, including adding, uh, new uh, whole new bathrooms and dinner, and dinner, neutral bathrooms. There also would be a, some light touch fixes on the existing bathrooms near the entrance and timeline for that. If we are able to get some quotes and bids in this year, I believe we would do that probably around the fall. We could probably get this going by the summer of, uh, twenty-two to twenty-three. So this, just a timeline on, on, on that. Some of the other improvements, by the way, would also be new green rooms. So students who are about to perform would not be waiting in the hallway outside the auditorium in the high school, if you're familiar with that whole situation. So a couple of good things right now, we, we are still in the right phases. KCBA is getting, uh, when the change orders is to give them some more money for the, for the design, construction drawings for those improvements. Um, and so more on that, to, more on that to, to come.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that. Okay, um, budget transfers. I'll accept the motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Chrisman move.
Moved in second. Any discussion? So roll call vote, Bob?
We can't hear you, Bob.
Dr. Chrisman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Larson still, is, is she here or no?
No.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Sinto?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, eight voting yes. Thank you, Bob. I'll accept the motion to approve disbursements from the following, from the funds as listed.
Snodgrass moved.
Wedeman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School Project Architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and the owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders as listed.
First moved.
Minji, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the additional services with KCBA architects for the Haverford High School project at a cost of forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Chrisman move.
Schwartz second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve the accelerated budget opt-out resolution certifying the tax rate within inflation index for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Moved.
Chrisman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can someone just explain that? Opt-out? Yeah, thank you, Larry. What is that opt-out, please, for the benefit of the community?
Since we're not going to exceed the Act One index, uh, we're, we're stating that we're not gonna exceed the Act One index. If, if, if we were, then there's a different timeline because we would have to put that out, uh, to the public for a possible referendum vote. And we're saying that we're, we, we're not doing that.
We're saying, saying our tax ceiling is two point six percent.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept, uh, the retirements and resignations as listed.
Fleischer moves.
Snodgrass second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Minji move.
Chrisman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the Family and Medical, uh, Leave Act, Leaves of Absence, including FF-CRA, subject to receipt of and consistent with required documentation as listed.
Oh, Fleischer.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two negotiated agreement between the school district of Haverford Township and the Education Support Personnel Association, effective July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and authorize the proper officers of the board to execute said agreement, subject to legal review.
Minji move.
Chrisman second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution to vaccinate our educators now.
Sinto moves.
Minji second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just want to say thanks for putting this together. It's really important, so, um, thank you.
Great.
I was just gonna ask that, um, some of the highlights of this appeal be shared with the public at this time?
Uh, this is in concert with the, um, community message that we sent out yesterday, uh, looking for respectful and responsible advocacy on the part particularly of, um, of Delaware County. Uh, the superintendents throughout Delaware County in conjunction with Chester County Health Department and the Delaware County Intermediate Unit have been working for many weeks now, coming up with a plan um, to vaccinate, that we've identified four locations across the county, um, identified, you know, there would be staff from each district um, coming to support that. So we were not relying solely on county help, uh, to get that up and running. Um, and the, the health department very, you know, very supportive of those efforts, uh, with a calendar all planned out. Um, and now are being told, you know, that we will not have the vaccines and it's not, not even given a date, um, as to when we can move our plans forward. And I think everyone knows that the vaccines are, are an important part of a process for, uh, returning to education. I want to thank in particular our colleague, my superintendent colleague at William Penn, um, who did the heavy lift in terms of putting this together and then sending it out to all of us and, and asking for, you know, for input. There's a lot of that that's been happening for the last ten months where we each, you know, take things and one or a few people get it started and then, you know, get it out to everybody. And there's a lot of teamwork across the county, which has been a nice outcome.
Thanks.
It was a topic of conversation at a, at the Delaware Legislative Council meeting, their Delaware County Legislative Council meeting, and um, had the support of all the board members present to, um, participate in this kind of, uh, resolution.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion, uh, to approve the board statement condemning the January sixth attack on the Capitol.
First moved.
Any discussion?
Can, can we read this out so people know what this is?
I, I, it looks like a draft. I have, I mean, is this the final? Just because there's a bunch of comments in it.
Actually, this, this is a draft. Is this not for this evening?
No, I thought this was just on as a, as a discussion item. I didn't see the wording to approve, to approve it. Um, sorry about that.
Because it is, it, it is in a draft format.
Mm-hmm. Um, this was, this is a draft format. Uh, as our board members know, uh, Ms. Larson, Mr. Schwartz, uh, took the initiative, similar to what I was explaining, superintendents have been doing across the county, uh, you know, took the initiative to put together a statement, um, it shared it with board members, individuals, you know, could provide comment to then, and the processes to ultimately, you know, bring back what we think would be representative of either the majority or as close to plurality, um, in feedback that was, you know, that was provided, uh, you know, for the, for those. Um, yes, what we have is, is some comment. The, I, I did receive an email from Ms. Larson earlier. Um, I think she was also under the interpretation, the impression that it was gonna be discussed tonight. However, you know, in a follow-up uh, email, she was anxious that we would get, you know, a statement, uh, you know, to get a statement out. But I'm not sure what to do by the fact that we, as we said, we, there are comments on it. Um, it still is in, still is in draft, you know, draft format. I don't know, Mr. Schwartz, if there's any addition.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the intention was, was to discuss it prior to, um, prior to, to, to this meeting. Uh, frankly, we, um, we, we, we allow things to talk about this evening prior, uh, executive session, we didn't get to it. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to leave it out there in draft form for, for the public to review, to look over. And if, if we could release it though, um, after addressing some of those comments, this, I mean, the sooner the better. It's we unfortunately weren't able to have statement out before our last meeting because literally the inspection happened the, the day before our, 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 our board meeting. So, but yes, I, I, we, we leave it out there for, for, for the public, but, but I wouldn't suggest that we release it officially prior to on this board meeting because it's gonna be two more weeks. So the sooner the better, I would say, but I would be okay with leaving it in drafts for right now and then finalizing it tomorrow or really next week.
Well, we can't send it out unless we vote on it, right? I mean, it's a
Right.
Right. Well, okay, I mean.
Final product, do we?
Yeah, so I, I just want to, just want to, um, clarify, the, the statement can sit there, you know, for ongoing board, you know, board input, um, you know, for ongoing board discussion about that. You know, for ongoing board discussion about that. Typically, a statement like this is not put out for public input. You know, prior to, this would be the work, you know, the work of the board. Again, I want to stress you would individually be providing input. The discussion could not occur in executive session. It's, it would have, you know, it, it occurs in the context of, of a public meeting. Once those, you know, once the input is gathered from each of the members and then some type of consensus or majority plurality is, you know, is reached around the document and then you would have your discussion at the meeting about that.
All right, so we're going to push this off. And I'd encourage board members to submit their, their comments as, as expeditiously as possible and will circle back to Kristin and Dave once there's, once there's a consensus document. All right. Board reports. Antoinette?
Um, thanks, yeah, um, just really quickly, I just want to thank Dr. Rishi for her statement at the beginning of the meeting today and the commitment, the ongoing commitment to the basis work, equity work, anti-racist work that, that we as a community, I think, really are proud of. And I just want to again reiterate my support as a board member for that ongoing work for the district. So, um, thank you for making that definitive statement. And thank you for the ongoing work in that area. Oh, and I really wanted to say, sorry, that I really enjoyed the, the, our music scholars today. I think it's really sad, one of the things that COVID has taken from our young musicians is playing together. And so it was really, really nice to hear the creative ways that, that they are still continuing their art and, and excelling at it. So, um, thank you for also bringing that in front of the board. That was a really, that was a treat.
Thanks, Antoinette, Ari?
I second that, Antoinette. Thank you for thanking Dr. Rishi and the administration and the basis work, Sarah Christensen, the Parent Guardian Equity Team for making Haverford the best community in school and out of school that it can possibly be. Understanding the limitations around vaccinations and social distancing requirements by the state and Chester County Health Department. I just want to really reiterate my support for expanding or, or reevaluating, analyzing and revisiting the current instructional model and any ways that we can as a district expand the number of hours and numbers of days that students get in-class instruction. I just want to voice my, my support for that.
Thanks, Ari, Dave?
When I order here, so I, um, yes, I also would, 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 would like to give my congratulations to Army of Scholars that, that was great to see them this evening. And also second what Antoinette and Ari both said about, you know, Dr. Rishi, thank you very much for your statement in support basis this evening. I also would, would echo my, my support for basis and the Parent Guardian Equity Group. Again, you know, what we saw on the sixth indicates a need for these kinds of programs. These are two, these are to make a welcoming environment for, for all students. That is their, that is their purpose. So they, there's not some other agenda, there's not some political agenda. It is trying to make schools a safe and welcoming place for kids. I just, I'm, I'm so glad that Dr. Rishi was able to have a few minutes to reiterate that this evening, like to just stress that to all members of the community. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dave.
Oh, I also congratulate, I'm sorry, also congratulations on our new president, Joseph R. Biden, as well. Just inaugurated just yesterday. So, let's fireworks.
Thanks, Dave, Laura?
Yes, thanks. So, as everyone has already said, Dr. Rishi, yes, thank you for your comments at the beginning. That was impactful. And I appreciate those, those words. And Sarah and all of your hard work for basis and apparent equity team. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing this work with all of you and you have my support. Congrats to the PMEA students. I, it's got to be really hard, like Antoinette said, to, to, you know, play a musical instrument or be in a choir when you can't be together. But I'm glad that these students were able to make it work somehow and be resilient and be recognized for their excellence. For everyone involved in new student registration, I know it was a little different this year, but on my end, it went really well. So thank you for all involved. It was really, it was really smooth, so I'm sure it was a lot of hard work, but it seemed easy on my end. So I guess all the hard work paid off. And then the last thing, um, I was very glad to be a part of the Zoom call. Was it Friday? I think it was last Friday with our new Senator-elect Amanda Capaletti. And Larry was there, Dr. Rishi was there, Bridgette was there. And superintendents and school board members from all over her district, so I was glad to be part of that conversation. I know that although she's not on the Education Committee, she is an advocate for public education and I think she'll be a strong voice for us and for all the districts in her area. So, um, you know, that was, it was nice to, to hear from her and especially with her background in public health. I'm hopeful that, you know, she can bring a strong voice for getting more vaccines rolling and getting this pandemic under control a little bit. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Laura, Sal?
There are a couple of things on the PSBA liaison front. There is going to be another advocacy day on, I'm just going to look this up here so I don't mess it up. March twenty-second. And the registration for that is on PSBA's website. And that is, is free to be a part of that. So, um, if anyone's interested in joining for that, either reach out to me or we just go to the PSBA website to check that out. One other item. So PSBA is providing members with complete coverage of the governor's budget proposal. And they are asking if you would like to plan to join them the next day, February third at noon for an hour-long budget complimentary webinar. Bringing data and analysis on the budget in terms of advocacy. So that information is also on PSBA's website. And we could provide you with that if you're interested. Just a quick congratulations as well to our PMEA members. Yeah, I do believe that those students are selected from among students in Delaware, Chester and Philadelphia counties to be, to have that honor. So, uh, there are quite a few number of students that typically would audition for that. And so it is, it is quite an honor. And I also wanted to say thank you for our mask. And I will try to not use this mask to cut my hole in to play the, the wind instruments. So I'll try to keep this one to the side and preserve it intact. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sal, Susan?
First of all, I would also like to thank Dr. Rishi for making a statement that I hope everyone understands we all agree with. And we were all very supportive and very energized by her statement. The second thing I would like to say tonight is, and I know I talk about my experience a lot, but having been in classrooms in Haverford Township for forty years and listening to all the words and the language that we heard tonight, I just specifically would like every single person who's listening to know that while a teacher might teach math, history, social studies, he might, might teach science, might teach music or art, they're always teaching kindness, they're always modeling fairness, and they're always talking about respect. So those are not things that we selectively pull from anywhere. That is basically who we are. And I'm proud, very proud to represent Haverford Township. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Susan, Bridgette?
I also want to appreciate Dr. Rishi's remarks at the beginning. I thought they could have been said at the beginning of the meeting and then following public comment and maybe here to wrap us up at the end. And I loved having the music students on. Too bad we didn't get a chance to hear some of their musical talents. Hopefully there's another format for that soon. This, as we were able to be recognized and celebrate is School Director Appreciation Month. And I know this time of COVID has drawn a lot more community attention to the school board, a lot more interest in the working of the school board. Our board will be doing some work to kind of do an assessment, make sure we're following best practices for how boards function and governance. And we'll be able to report out on that soon. But it is also a time to start thinking about if anyone in the community has interest in serving the school board. PSBA is doing a training, there was one today or yesterday, but there is opportunities on Monday, the twenty-fifth at noon and four to learn about the role and, and function of a school board and the directors that, you know, I think, I would say what it really takes is the commitment to public education and an interest in, in serving the community. And we are, we are led now with a great group of directors. But if, if someone in the community has an interest in serving, please do some checking out of the PSBA resources to learn what's involved. We're hoping, you know, that we continue to have a school board that's well-staffed with committed people who have the best interest of public education and bring a diverse set of skills and experiences that reflect our district. I've been spending a lot of time, as Larry mentioned, there's just a lot of different meetings. I went to the PSBA Essentials of Board Leadership, the first of a four-part series to, uh, you know, as a vice president of the board to talk about governance and advocacy, building consensus, communication, evaluation. I was at the Senator Capaletti meeting. I attended the PSBA Weekly Buzz and the Delco Legislative Council. And, um, a lot of the topics and themes are the same. The need to advocate for resources, to funding, concerns about special education and charter reform. And at this moment, the vaccines came to the top. But I also wanted to bring up how in all of these forums, local here in Delaware County or statewide, the PSBA Annual Conference, there is a theme of equity that is driving our work. It is, um, this conversation feels like it's happening, you know, here in Haverford Township. It is a broad priority across the education landscape in all forums. It's, um, it is not a, a unique or locally crafted kind of program. It is foundational to what public education means. And I think the, the comments that we hear from the community just redouble my effort to support basis and the work that we're doing in our township to, to be inclusive and welcoming and supportive of all of our students and their unique needs and gifts. And to have students that are trained here and learned by example of how to navigate in a diverse and complex world. And Haverford, I think, is doing a good job of that, has more work to do. And we are in partnership, as I said, with every educational forum that we're in learning together on, on how to improve this work and, and make this movement something that benefits students everywhere.
Thanks, Bridgette. Want to thank my fellow board members and also Dr. Rishi. And I'd like to thank the members of the community who took the time to contact us in support of the program. I'd also like to ask the district if we might be able to reach out to the folks who it seems misunderstand what the program is and what the purpose of it is and invite them to please take some time and attend our February eighteenth meeting where Sarah will describe the program more in depth and perhaps it'll be a beneficial educational experience for those folks. There's been a lot going on legislatively. Last week, I, I met, participated in three meet and greet sessions with PSBA with three new state senators in the area. Nikhil Saval in Philadelphia, Senator Kane, who took Senator Killian's spot, and also Senator Capaletti. Earlier in the week, uh, I met with a couple of Senator Capaletti staffers just to talk in general about the education environment. They, I invited them to attend our legislate, Delco Legislative Council meeting, which was held yesterday morning and three of, three of her staffers came to that meeting, which was, is great. And I have a feeling that at least we'll get some representation in that legislative meeting regularly. In addition to the Delaware County Legislative Council meeting yesterday morning, I also attended the legislative meeting at the Montgomery County IU last night. There was a, a new state representative there, Napoleon Nelson, who previously served, I think, for six years on the Cheltenham School Board. So he'll be a, a great addition to the House Education Committee in Harrisburg for us. Also want to mention that Senator Carney, who's not our state senator, but I believe represents nine or ten Delco districts, has been appointed to the Senate Education Committee. His chief of staff has been attending our legislative meetings in Delaware County for the past two years, so that, that's great. We're going to have some very well-versed public ed supporters on those committees from our area. Guess last but not least, today, I also was in a, a couple of meetings. One is PSBA's Charter Reform Task Force. We've met once a week for, I guess, the past month or so and probably for another month or so. And we're, we're trying to put together practical, feasible recommendations for legislation on charter reform. And it's a good group, it's statewide, real variety of districts, urban, suburban, rural, rich, poor. And we're making good progress, so hopefully in another month or so, we'll have an end product. And later this afternoon, I met with the PA Schools Work Coalition to get a briefing on the school funding lawsuit that's been in the works for a couple of years now. It sounds like they expect it to come to actually come before Commonwealth Court in the spring or the summer. And that's been an ongoing saga in Pennsylvania for, for a long time. We're blessed to be in a well-funded school district. The meetings that Bridgette and I attend regularly were with school directors from districts that are not as fortunate. And they're not able to provide their students with the same kinds of resources that we take for granted. So this, this school funding lawsuit is, is very important and I'm hopeful that it'll raise some consciousness in the legislature and we'll see some good results. All right, it's quarter after ten. The board met in executive session to consult with council on personnel matters and pending litigation. And I was just prior to the board meeting this evening and why we were a few minutes late. Our next regular public board meeting is February fourth, twenty-twenty-one, same Zoom place, same Zoom time, seven-thirty. And with that, thank everybody and I will accept a motion to adjourn. Thanks all, have a good one.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.